Today is Monday, March 7th, 2022.
Today is Monday, March 7th, 2022.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
She did notify our clerk that she is ill this evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
Here.
Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we'll go ahead and stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. She did notify our clerk that she is ill this evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
Here.
Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we'll go ahead and stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
All right, at this time, we will go ahead with a call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. The council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may suspend cases immediately. Commenting members may ask staff to review a matter raised or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Plen members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matter is properly addressed for discussion and legal action. I do have one speaking request at this time. May I ask that there is anybody else who also can raise your hand? Plen members of the council shall not discuss or take action. I have Cassandra Sherm. And if there's anybody else, you also can raise your hand. And I will allow you to speak. I do have one speaking request at this time. And if there's anybody else, you also can raise your hand.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, Town Council, and citizens of Florence. I just want to reach out and introduce myself. My name is Cassandra Sherm, for Town Council. And the three main points that I want to talk about is faith. So I've been married over first 20 years. Lifelong member of my church, Strong Values. I like to build relationships. My family, my husband is a fireman for Florence. We have three children. They're all attending the Florence meetings at this time. I have one that actually graduated last year from Florence High School and is now attending Central Arizona College. My family, police officers. My second will graduate next year and join the military. And my third will enter fire tactical next year. So we're kind of on that bend with our families. My third one is Florence. I'm an educator for Florence. I've been teaching for over 18 years since I've done charter public and corrections. I joined the emergency response team back in 2019. And I've been a zone captain. Currently, I'm serving as the finance chief and an educator for our members. So my three priorities for running is for education, obviously, to provide educational, governmental, occupational, recreational opportunities for youth. Public safety. To improve our response time and promote positive police presence to deter crime, with continued growth and the opportunity to properly staff police, fire, and emergency medical responses for the safety and quality of our life and our growth for our town. And smart growth communication is key to success and growth of our town. Create opportunities for the town to actively engage and communicate ways to improve the goals of the town. And that's, I just want to introduce myself. Thank you, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the introduction. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Garcia, I cannot see online. Is there anybody online that has their hand raised?
No.
All right, thank you so much. There will be a secondary call to the public at the end as well, if anybody would like to speak. For now, we'll go ahead and close the first call to the public. Item 6A is our presentation. First, we would like to go ahead and recognize the 36th Annual Historic Home Tour Committee. This is so exciting. Ms. Allison Feliz, can I meet you at the podium after you're done speaking?
Mayor, council, members of the public, we just wanted to take the time to recognize the committee members who are on the Historic Home Tour Committee. They give their time for several years now. These committee members have been part of the home tour and they just make it what's so special every year. We began meeting in April, and these ladies are there every month with new ideas and you can tell their love for Florence. So we just want to take this time to recognize them and show them some appreciation for all of the hard work and dedication that they put into the town of Florence. So at this time, I would like to call up all of our committee members to the podium.
I'm going to let you do this because I'm going to say one thing.
Our committee is absolutely fantastic. If you have not had an opportunity to come out to one of our Historic Home Tours, I really encourage you to start planning and coming out next year. These ladies work tirelessly and they plan all year. They plan what the route is going to be. They coordinate with the homeowners in the area. And they really put together such a phenomenal opportunity for people to get to know our architecture, our culture, and our heritage here in Florence. So I do want to say thank you so much. It is amazing. You guys won an award for this in the past, and in my opinion, you should have won awards every single year for this. All right, Alicia Marufo. Chris Reed. Lynn Smith. Oh, Lynn's not here this evening.
But let's give her a round of applause.
Mari Selah Benitez. Barb Kelly. And Sherri Crossland.
We will get this to Lynn. Why don't we come on over? We'll bring everybody together.
Are you joining us?
Yeah.
Come on in. You leave our center because without you, this would not happen. Would any of you ladies like to say anything about the tour?
Just that it's a miracle that we've had people willing to bring their homes open to have it. And people came out for it with a little bit of fear because of COVID. I just think it really was a miracle. And I'm so proud of us that we were able to do it as well as we did. And I thank all the town people that participated as well. I know Councilman Neal was there. And these ladies, Ally and Mari, are both really wonderful to work with.
It's our honor every year to help and to put this program on. Again, we couldn't do it without Ally and Mari right there because they make sure, and Alicia, to make sure that, you know, we're all on schedule and everything is good. And then all of our volunteers that we get to help in the homes, you know, we're just a little part of that. But those volunteers learn about the homes, about the architecture, about different things that, you know, people are going to ask them all day long. And so I really, you know, think our volunteers that we get into the homes are, you know, are a big part of how we succeed.
I was going to say, can you hear me? A big shout out to you, Barb, for coordinating all the volunteers. And you just make sure that everybody has what they need and provide a welcoming environment. And you tirelessly work on it to make sure everything goes smoothly. Let's give these fine ladies one more round of applause.
Item 6B is the presentation of the conceptual drawings of the Pierce Fire Apparatus approved by council on January 3rd, 2022. Chief Walter.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I wanted this to be a bigger reveal, but because of technology, we had to have it up on the screen. But I wanted to tell you, perhaps some of you have experienced this as well. Somebody, maybe a child at home or somebody in your household, has found something that they need, that you need to buy. And you go through and they give you a little justification. And how does that usually end? Show me a picture of it. Show me what you, show me what it is that you want to buy. So Councilmember Mendoza, I heard you on January 3rd when I came and asked you, and you guys were graciously gracious enough to approve our purchase of the truck. But I wanted to officially bring this back to you and show you, even though it's not colored, this is, this is a picture of what we're going to buy. So I know we've already passed that point, but if anybody had any questions or clarifications now that you can see a picture of it, I'd be happy to answer that. All right, well, thank you very much and apologies. I will keep that in mind for the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Item seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called.
Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez is not here tonight. She did call the clerk's office and she did request that Resolution Number 1818-22 be tabled if council so desires.
Thank you very much. And if they wanted that tabled, what would they need to do?
They would need to pull it off consent agenda and then make a motion individually.
Thank you very much. Item A is adoption of Resolution Number 1818-22, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, amending the Florence Town Council Rules of Procedure effective April 7th, 2022. Item B, adoption of Resolution Number 1816-22, a resolution of the town of Florence, Arizona, mayor and common council, designating the chief fiscal officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2022 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. Item C, adoption of Resolution Number 1817-22, a resolution of the town of Florence, Arizona, mayor and common council, designating the common fiscal officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2023 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. Item D is adoption of the Major General Plan Amendment Calendar for 2022. Item E is to approve the contract with Will Dan Financial Services to provide the 2022 utility rate study. Item F is approval of the 90th Annual Junior Parata Rodeo Request for Proposal for an event producer to manage the Junior Parata Rodeo. Item G is to accept the Register of Demands ending February 28th, 2022 in the amount of $3,721,333.22. And item H is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. One, January 20th and February 3rd, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. That is our consent agenda. We also heard the request from Ms. Garcia. So at this time, council.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is our new business, Resolution Number 1815-22. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Arizona, proposing a permanent adjustment to the 1979-80 base expenditure limitation of the town of Florence, and directing the town manager, town finance director, town clerk, town legal services director, or their duly authorized officers and agents to take all steps necessary to carry out the purposes and intent of this resolution. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, we have been talking about the need to increase our permanent base adjustment basically since the day we did the election. And so what this does is it will increase our permanent base adjustment amount to $5 million. This will allow for future expenditures, for economic expenditures, and future needs of the municipality. We do need to say that this does have nothing to do with taxes, nor does it have anything to do with fee increase. We'll continue to receive the same rate of money and we will only spend what we currently or what we have at the time. So there is no taxpayer increase and there is no increase to fees based on this. It will allow us to, as we're looking at our future for the next 20 years, we will be able to expend the necessary dollars to be able to provide the services to the citizens and to be able to put in new infrastructure and to be able to be ready for any economic development opportunities that come our way. And with that, I will turn that over to the finance director.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council, just to let you know that we have set this. I'm sorry. We've set the limit at $5 million to ensure that you have plenty of budget capacity. Oh, my gosh. All right. Apologize. We have set the limit at $5 million to ensure that for the next many, many years that you have plenty of budget capacity. As you can see, our growth has expanded all of a sudden, and we were not completely prepared for this expansion. But I just want to let you know that we have 17 development areas right now that are being prepared to be developed. And with that comes a multitude of fees and development impact fees, building fees, different kinds of things. And the needs of the community is going to require a significant amount of development and infrastructure. So we want to make sure that we are prepared to go forward in this manner and that you won't have to be going back to the state to get this expanded. And as Lisa said, it has nothing to do with what we're going to spend. It has to do with the amount of budget that you will have available to spend. If you have the monies, then you can expend them. Currently, right now, we're under a low expenditure limitation. And last year, we struggled to maintain that to the expenditure that we had available. And this year, I have even more of a struggle. I've already prepared, basically, prepared the preliminary budget, and we're going to be going through that next week and looking at different factors and then coming back to council with hopefully a balanced budget at that time.
Mayor, council, I do want to remind you one thing. What happens when we have too low of expenditure limitation is exactly what happened this year. In order to get the fire truck that your interim fire chief just presented on, we did have to go out and get a bond issuance. We did have the money available within our budget capacity if we were not at the expenditure limitation. But because we are meeting that expenditure limitation threshold, we did have to go for a bond. We do have to pay interest fees, and it's just not the best way of doing business. We would like to spend our citizens' money in the, in the smartest way possible and not pay any type of interest on that when we're making our purchases. So with that, if you have any questions.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 1815-22.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Item B is discussion on the town of 2020, 2022 Florence Special Event In-Kind Sponsorships. Ms. Allison Feliz.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, members of the public. This is to show that since 2019, council has increased funding to support all of the events in town. And as you guys can see, just by driving through town or seeing the different events that are occurring throughout town, it's made a huge impact. There's pretty much an event happening every weekend. So Florence is the happening place to be for events. Since 2019, the town has assisted with 20 events. We have invested $89,350 into events. That's cash sponsorships. And we have provided $32,661 of in-kind services for these events. So this is just a recap of some of the awesome things that the increased funding has done to support some of these events. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions?
I'd like to thank Ally for her efforts here and also the chamber and the Historical Society because as you look at the events, these events were sponsored by a lot of different people in town. And it took a lot of cooperation and a lot of planning on Ally's part to bring all this together. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I do have a question. So in just looking some of them over, obviously, events has been something that's been very passionate and we've communicated wanting to increase. And we've collectively found creative solutions to bring forward new events in our community. How many of these are new events that we're funding in regards to, you know, continually building on that versus continually funding the same events every year? I'm questioning for like sustainability because they're so amazing. I just want to have that information as we gear up for our budget year.
Mayor, it looks like about four of these are new events and then the remainder of them have been existing events. Yeah, I think four of them are, are new events here.
All right, thank you so much. Have we had any other interest since, I know we closed our spring proposals coming in, but have there been any other communications coming forward about certain types of, you know, events or new events coming in that are interested in this program?
Not that I can recall at the moment. I don't believe that there was any new events. I know there was a gentleman who was interested in doing a fall event and we provided him with all of the paperwork for that. I believe he was wanting to call it Florence Stock, but we haven't received anything further from him.
You know what? I believe I talked to that gentleman over at.
Yeah, I think you sent him our way.
Okay. Interesting. He's also looking at bringing a welding component to Florence.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for gathering that. Oh, Councilmember Hughes?
I just also want to say that I think it's, it's a, it says something about our community that we've been through a pandemic. This last four years have been tough on everybody. And these events have hung through the hardest times. So I really love that we're, that we're embracing these people and they stayed with us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and item C is discussion approval disapproval of the contract with Fester and Chapman as the town independent auditors for fiscal year '22 through fiscal year 2025. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. This is to award our contract for auditing service to Fester and Chapman. The town has been very pleased with their services. They're quite easy to work with. Whenever you have auditors, you do not want to change them very often unless there's an issue because they provide consistency and historical information about what has happened to the town of Florence and how we got here. We have numerous times had to contact Fester and Chapman just to give us guidance and to help us out with some issues that we have in the past. And we just really depend on them for quite good service. They're easy to work with and very friendly. These contracts that we enter into with Fester Chapman are for the court audits, the development impact fee audits, our normal annual audits, and also our community facilities district audits. As you can see, for each fiscal year, we have the impact of for four years. And then we have an option to extend for two years maximum. We identify the sources of where the budget is located for each of these. And with that, we ask that you renew their contract and extend it for the appropriate time that we have indicated in, in the RCA.
Thank you. Very informative. Council, any questions regarding the agenda item as presented? All right, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the contract with Fester and Chapman as the town independent auditors for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2025. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you so much. Item 10 is our manager's report. Wait, I know there was a legislative report. Sorry, I checked it off and I apologize for that.
No worries. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I have just a few high-level updates regarding this year's, excuse me, this week's legislative report. First up, following my presentation from February 22nd, I've created a new bill tracking sheet that was included in tonight's packet. Please let me know if there's any information you'd like me to add or remove, if there's any other comments. Next up, there's a number of new bills that are on the list that recently passed out of committee or are the subject of a Strike Everything Amendment. All new bills on the list are tagged with a Y in the new question mark column. And I'll continue to flag those going forward so you can easily identify new Strike Everything bills or amendments to see what is new on our radar. Finally, now that we are a few weeks out from crossover week, we have a good sense of the bills we'll be dealing with moving forward. With that, the league has identified the bills which they're most concerned with. And those bills, those bill numbers are in bold so you can quickly locate them when reviewing the list. And with that, I'll take any questions on specific bills, if there are any.
Council, do you have any questions on specific bills? Now, I find the updates that we're receiving very informative, as well as the ability to follow and track them in live time. Again, that option is also available to all of our citizens as explained in the previous meeting. And if they have any questions, they can reach out to any of us or you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Item 10 is our manager's report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council, your manager's report is filed and I would be happy to ask questions, answer questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for the manager's report at this time? Well, thank you and I appreciate you putting that all together for us.
You're welcome.
Item 11 is our department reports. Are there any questions for our department heads? Councilmember Hughes, go ahead.
I have, I'd like to talk to Keith from Community Development. I would like for you to kind of explain to council the new form for the code enforcement, if you could kind of inform the public also.
Okay. So the form, how about now? Okay. So the form actually, so I will go back just a little bit. So Councilmember Hughes has been requesting a report, a certain report that we have just not been able to get, and so we finally were able to. So tonight, what you see in front of you is an up-to-date as of today report. Part of our packet and part of my report was the previous one, and we just wanted to give you an up-to-date report on that and what we've been doing, what, these are cases that we're presently working right now.
Can you explain? Everything is not here exactly, because there was parts that were not put in, but could you explain to the council on what, as you expand this report, what it's going to show?
Oh, sure. Well, what we've done with this report, and I think that it's finally where we needed to be, this report will show addresses. It will show, it shows names and what's going on with the locations for that to give us a little bit of a better understanding of the process, especially going into our work session. I think this is good timing to make sure and get this out, so we can kind of explain a little bit more of our procedure.
And maybe I'll just tell the council.
Please.
Is that what I requested is that we put a G I S report together so that we can show areas where there's repeat offenders, if they've been there two to three times, that we can show where the blight, we've been driving around, we've taken drives around, and I took our town manager on Friday, and every time we go out, we find different things. So it's an exciting way to be able to identify and start to change the culture.
Absolutely.
And I know we're all in agreement that we all want, we will all want Florence to be back to its splendor again. So I think this is on the right track of putting us back there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith, for you as well. On here, you have people's addresses, but on the vacant land, you just have land, just vacant land.
So.
I would like to see actual addresses for those.
Okay. And we might, so some of these, when it doesn't say, when it says vacant land, there's no address to it, we can put cross streets possibly?
That's fine, just so we know when we're looking at it, we know where it's at.
Okay. Very good.
Because if it just has the person's name, then I'm going to have to go and try to figure out where that piece of property is at.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, you're, on page one, your column headings don't line up with the page, but the other pages do.
I have to say, I was so excited to be able to do this report, but I didn't pay attention to that, but we will make that change.
Good report. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for any other department heads at this time? All right. Thank you, department heads, for your detailed reports. This is our second call to the public. Is there anybody at this time? Ms. Kathy Adam?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Kathy Adam, 240 East Ruggles. I was not planning to speak tonight, but I do want to congratulate the Home Tour Committee. The Pinnell County Historical Society was part of the home tour, so I didn't get to many of the homes, but I did visit some, and I saw a lot of people on the streets, and I heard from our teams that we drew a lot of new visitors. Our mix has usually run eighty, twenty repeat visitors, and I think the word's getting out now, and that's terrific for Florence, so I want to just congratulate the team again. I'd like to just put a plea in, since it came up today about the special event grant program, and my plea is really that everybody start keeping in mind South Main Street. That was the focus of the redevelopment planning that we've done, and it is the area that needs some attention. And so I am speaking very myopically about the museum. We don't get to play in that grant program. It ends at Butte. So I think that, yes, it's self-serving, but if we don't start thinking about South Main Street, now Keith has done a nice job cleaning it up, we were not part of the first cleanup. It went only to Butte. So he did go out, and now it's much better, but I'm not understanding this divide. So my plea is for the next grant program, that you always, you know, give some consideration, because we would like to participate.
I'm very glad that you spoke up, and yes, we will give direction to staff as we are continuing to develop, make sure that that is one of the options that is brought forward. We do appreciate, and I'm going to say we collectively, because I know every one of us does appreciate the efforts that the museum puts forward in addition to, you know, the events that happen in our community.
Well, in year number three of the pandemic, we're feeling the hurt, right? We did pretty well the first two years, and we appreciate the grant from the town that we received. We went for the payroll protection, and we were one of the few places that used 100% to protect our people. So they did not lose an hour's of pay. But in year three, it's getting a little dicey, so we could use all the help we could get. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Is there anybody online, Ms. Garcia?
There are no hands raised.
All right. Thank you so much. We are closing the second call to the public, and we'll go to call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Mendoza?
I don't have anything right now. I do want to thank everyone for all their reports. I mean, they're very informative. All my questions were answered with these reports. You're doing really good.
Councilmember Neal?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Hughes?
Okay, I do. Today is National Be Heard Day, and it was, it's from business mentor Shannon Sherry, and she founded it in 2004, and it's to help small business stand up and be heard over the big business marketing. The, we, the small business employ over 145 million employees in the United States. It recognizes that they provide 47% of our workforce, and it's very, very important in that is when small business owners, they live, work, and play, you know, in the communities, that that money stays and grows here, that, that. So I want to put a charge out to the people that we know you love our local businesses, but I'm just asking that if you can go out and if you do have a good, if you have good service, tell people about it. You know, go on their website, go on social media and share their banners, share events that are coming up, you know? And if you have, if you've liked something they've done, tell them. They usually get everything they've done wrong, but it'd be nice to hear something they've done right. And the last thing is bring some of your friends along with you the next time that you go, so that, you know, that you're expanding our base. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I would like to just thank our acting town manager. You know, we all take Lisa for granted, but if you notice over the last two months, things have gone pretty smooth, haven't they? So thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
My first thing is these. These are not quite working out for us. As you can tell, most of us have to really apply some pressure, and I don't think they should be that difficult, and it's slowing down our process, because we're sitting here trying to turn them on, and if we don't notice that somebody's trying to turn their microphone on, we might miss somebody needing to say something, so, because somebody else might get their microphone on sooner. So if we could figure out how to make these a little more workable, please. I wanted to let our citizens know that have been voicing their concerns about code compliance, that Keith is on it, and Councilwoman Hughes did not mention it, but she has been out in the streets and driving around and taking staff and pointing it out to them, areas that are in desperate need of some attention. So it is not falling on deaf ears here on council, the issues that we are having with code compliance. And then, other than that, I just want to pray for the people in the Ukraine and everybody that's helping them. That's it.
Thank you. So I just wanted to highlight just a few items in our town manager's report. So I, first of all, want to say thank you to our town manager, as well as all of our department heads for always providing such enriching and insightful reports, because we may know it, because we sit up on the dais, we have frequent conversations, but to our citizens, they need access to this, and they do have access online. And sometimes, it's always just a little bit more helpful if we communicate it at the meeting as well. So I just want to take a few moments just to point out a few things. So, as you know, we had our national survey. So we are going to be bringing a presentation on March 21st, 2022, and Polco, who actually coordinated the survey for our community, will be here presenting that data information, and we'll also be meeting regarding the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds. I wanted to touch base on our 2022-2023 budget, because we do hear a lot of frequent buzz within the community, especially when it comes time to budget season, as we heard earlier from Ms. Kathy Adam when she was talking about the grant programs and items coming up. Like, those are the times when we have those enriching discussions and we're planning for the upcoming year. And I wanted to just communicate that the Finance Department has received the departmental budgets and the capital improvement plans for the 2022-2023 budget, and we're eagerly awaiting our revenues from the state. So as we wait, the staff is going to begin working on balancing items that have been requested with the projected revenues that are received. So some key areas of focus during this budget are going to be standard operations and the general fund, her funds, enterprise funds, and capital improvement plans. Now, there's also special consideration that's going to be paid to employee compensation and classification and the permanent base adjustment. A few other items that were highlighted on here is our candidate packets that are available. The candidate packets have been available for distribution since January 3rd, 2022, and to date, six packets have been distributed for three seats. Candidates can submit packets between March 4th and April 4th, 2022, and you can touch base with Ms. Lisa Garcia to arrange that coordination. Really excited to hear about the Territory Square project, because anybody who's gone through and looked at those plans or attended our meetings in the past, it is a phenomenal project, and our staff is currently scheduling a meeting with the property owners of Territory Square to discuss the infrastructure planning efforts that are to occur, and we will be awaiting an input after that meeting. Now, the IIMC election for a vice president. We all know that we're very proud of Lisa Garcia, known as our town clerk, and she is always willing to step into any role that we need her to fulfill in our town. So she's been running for IIMC vice president position since July 2021. On April 4th, 2022, she's going to announce the results of those elections, and I wanted to wish you a very sincere good luck. We are all rooting for you. For those of you that may be watching, she is a phenomenal town clerk. She takes her job very seriously, and she works tirelessly and effortlessly for our staff and citizens of Florence. So I just wanted to give one final shout-out, because my intention is not to read the entire report, but to just entice you a little bit to know that there are several more pages that you can dive into within this document. But grants have always been a passion of mine, and Jennifer Evans works very hard at writing grants, and she coordinates with all of our town department heads, and she works just amazing. Just a little highlight grants update that she provided for this agenda item is the Arizona State Parks Off-Highway Vehicle OHV Grant. So the town is going to receive an extension of the OHV grant for the Post-In Butte Preserves Fence Project, and it is a $100,000 grant that will assist with the installation of a barbedless wire fence around the preserve boundaries, and a governor's office highway safety grant. And we've received an extension from Prop 207, and it's an additional $15,000. So thank you very much, and we will continue to provide updates. With that, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Don't forget the Florence Music Festival this weekend. It's Friday, Saturday, so come over, and if you want to camp out, you can hear lots of good music.
Thank you very much. With that, we do have a lot of exciting events coming up, as Councilmember Hughes just mentioned, and please, if you are driving, be careful. Our community is upon spring break, so it starts on Friday after school, and they will be out of school for two weeks, so please drive safely, pay attention for any kiddos that might be out and about in the community. With that, item 14 is Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. I need a call to order, roll call. Board Mendoza?
Here.
Board Neal?
Here.
Board Hughes?
Here.
Board Rodriguez is absent. Board Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Cordes?
Here.
Chair Walter? Here. At this time, we need an adjournment to a joint executive session with the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and the mayor and council of the town of Florence.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries.